Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary? McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any changes. We'll need a closed session tonight. I have a couple of hours to play later. And then we need the agenda of other officials' comments.
Okay, we're going to go into public comment. I will make a note based on the attorney's recommendation for items on the solar farm. We are going to request to hold comments on that at the Plan Commission meeting on 10/8. We will be sending our plan is to send a motion back to Plan Commission for that specific item. So just wanted to mention that for public comment. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. I'll let you know in thirty seconds left.
How are you doing? I'm Charles Wilson. I'm a historian at Streeter High School. As I said last week, there's talk about change in parking at Morrell Street residential. And I see it's on agenda. Since then, we got petition at the high school. First of all, there's seven cars there at five o'clock in the morning, six o'clock. There's down to three residential cars there. And by 7:30, you can't find a parking spot anywhere on that side because of all the teachers who didn't have that park there. I feel it's more productive, we got petition together. The petition, which I got copies for everybody. The request for designated staff and administration parking on north and south side of the 100 and 200 block of Morrell Street in Streeter. The what we're asking is designated staff and administration parking only hours six to four, Monday through Friday, when school is in session. After that, it can be public parking. That's on that. I got 105 staff members. They're all employees of the high school. And they all feel that'd be more productive. Instead of having three cars sit there all day, that'd be much better for rain and snow and all that, and also store removal. Wouldn't that be it? Can I give you some comments?
Yes, you can get a copy.
I'll pass it along for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you know in thirty seconds.
Your name?
It's Kelly Peter. I also work at the high school. So on behalf, I'm just going to read something. On behalf of me and some other staff members at Streeter High School, I wish to express my collective objection to the proposal to designate the 100 and 200 blocks of Morrell Street as residential parking only. Our concern is that it could have a potential domino effect where similar restrictions could be extended to other public streets around our school and in the broader community. Implementing such a restriction on this block of Morrell Street may set a precedent leading to parking and traffic issues in several other areas, including but not limited to South Park Street, South Bloomington Street, and adjacent to St. Michael's School, Columbus Road during drop off and pickup for times. Furthermore, Linden Street and Madison Street, as well as the remaining blocks of Morrell Street up to the football field, are also frequently used by our students, staff, and visitors. It's important to acknowledge that the residents in the vicinity of the high school have long been accustomed to the high volume of traffic and parking needs associated with school hours and school-related events. It's not a new development. We've done this for many years. Residents typically have driveways and/or alley access to manage their parking needs. They should really be well-prepared for the increased demand for street parking during its peak times. I think imposing a residential parking only restriction could unintentionally cause traffic and parking congestion by diverting vehicles to other nearby streets, which are already under pressure. This move may not, or might not only disrupt our school operations, but it could also create a broader parking and traffic challenging challenges throughout the community. We respectfully urge the city council to reconsider this proposal, taking into account the potential ripple effects it may have on our school's operations and the surrounding neighborhoods. A more collaborative approach to addressing parking concerns, perhaps through improved communication with residents and S H S staff, as well as comprehensive planning, could serve our community's diverse needs. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer McMullin. I was born and raised in Streeter. I've been a small business owner in our downtown area. And up until July this year, I was also a resident of Morrell Street and the 500 block. I currently work at Streeter High School, and I rely on public street parking in the 100 and 200 blocks of West Morrell Street. I'm here tonight speaking as an individual, though I have many concerns from fellow S H S staff members about the motion to restrict the parking. And these are both taxpaying Streeter residents angry that this is even an issue, and commuters from surrounding towns who feel that this is just another situation tarnishing their image of Streeter. The main questions I bring to you tonight, and hopefully we can address these in the discussion later, are why is this an issue now after years and years of public access? And why are the proposed limits targeting only those of us who utilize the parking during the week when schools are in session? I graduated from S H S, and I'm going to age myself here, almost 30 years ago. And at that time, it was mainly students who parked in those blocks. Since the building's restructuring created student and visitor access through the main entrance on Lincoln Street only, those blocks of Morrell Street are occupied mostly by teachers, paras, and other staff members. There are a few lots on the south side of the building that are reserved for staff and student parking. However, there are plans to build a new structure on the main lot, which will eliminate a significant number of spots. As I see it, even before these spots are gone, pushing us all to that area will create bigger issues that you may not have considered. Most of the staff arrives before the student body. If spots are unavailable when students arrive, they will then seek parking wherever they can in order to avoid being targeted. This could force them into street parking in the west areas of Lincoln, which are already regularly being used for parking. The same issues may not arise for that block. Or worse, they will ignore the restrictions on Morrell Street and park there anyway. I have seen firsthand students accidentally blocking driveways on Lincoln. It may happen on Morrell. Will you revisit this topic every few months when another resident has a problem with unavailable spots in front of their home? And what about the perpendicular streets affected, like Madison, Jefferson, and Adams? When those residents get tired of the excess parking in front of their houses, will they too get a say on who parks there and when? And where does it stop? I know Kelly mentioned this earlier, but if home dwellers on South Park and South Bloomington Streets disagree with St. Michael's staff parking in front of their homes, will that be addressed next? How will this new restriction be enforced?
Thirty seconds.
Will there be signs posted? Will they have tags or special plates? How will you know if it's a resident or a guest of a resident or neither? I feel like a lot of you have already had your mind made up about this, and I'm urging you to take our concerns into consideration, especially since no one at the high school was even contacted that this was an issue, in an effort to come to a compromise. Thank you.
I'll let you know in thirty seconds left, okay?
Thank you, Baroche. I concur with these votes about the parking. There's going to be a substantial building that the student park on that's going to affect down the road. But what I mainly here for tonight is to kind of maybe got an idea that helped with some of this parking, especially during the football game. Very miscommunication, misunderstanding, whatever. The school was going to purchase two lots down by the football field, put parking lots in it. And the third parking lot was going to be on our old softball dining. But according to where you guys' ordinance is written, we'd have to concrete it, put grating, fences, and everything else. What's it going to cost us? If you're going to buy a lot for $10,000, it's going to cost us $50,000 or $60,000 to do that. Okay, we're going to bypass the other two lots we can't have. But we'd sure like to, on our own, old softball dining, we'd like to build, but gravel, make a parking lot during football games and soccer, whatever else is down there, and that will eliminate a lot of the parking on the streets. So I don't know if you guys have to go back and rewrite your ordinance, or let us do something on our own property, which is fenced in, got two entrances and an exit. To me, it seems like a no-brainer. We're not going to, the school's not going to move on anything until it's illegal. We want to make sure that we can do that. So if somebody can revisit that and let us gravel that thing, we're not going to use it anymore. It's going to, it's going to help older people like myself. I have a walk so far, so. I appreciate you taking a look at that ordinance. I know you can't do it overnight, but if you guys could do something about it, we could start moving on at least by next spring. Thank you.
Baroche, sir. Any further public comments for tonight?
I have a question. Are we going to talk about the solar farms tonight, Hour 18?
So we are going to, we're going into new business. We will be looking at the Plan Commission's recommendations, receiving and placing one on file, referring one to Plan Commission is what our vote is on. We'll have to take the official vote. And then item two is the Row 18. And I will be requesting to have that tabled. Whether council votes and agrees with me or not will be up to them.
And is that going to take place in the next month?
The Plan Commission meeting will be October 8th, 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? We will go into then the 2023 audit presentation. What does it kick?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me hear this tonight. My name is Anthony Servini, the Audit Director on the city's December 31st, 2023 audit. Just like to present a few pieces of information for you this evening related to that 2023 audit, included in your annual comprehensive financial report. First and foremost, just want to thank the city for their responsiveness throughout the audit process there. Audit process on our end certainly goes very smoothly. City is always addresses our needs properly on that, so we appreciate that. Pleased to report to you this evening that we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements as of the fourth fiscal year end of December 31st, 2023. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that the provided monitors thinks the financial statements in our city are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also included with the end of the annual comprehensive financial report is a separate opinion in accordance with what we call generally accepted government auditing standards required based on the combined federal and state dollars that are spent by the city. As part of that as well, we look at a certain, a couple of other components, noting that we did not identify any material weaknesses in the city's internal control structure, nor do we note any instances of non-compliance in our testing. So again, clean reporting, clean opinions all around in terms of what the city received for 2023. A few items from operational standpoint, the management's discussion and analysis, which you can find immediately after the independent auditors' reports. This serves as the executive summary component to the annual comprehensive financial report. If you have constituents or other users who are interested in these financial position, recommend having them read that section there. It includes information from both 2023, as well as comparative information from 2022. But I think the most valuable, the most important part of that is it actually includes management's explanations and analysis for why those figures have changed from one year to the next. So it takes the significant amount of financial data included in your report provides some context to that. From a results standpoint, as of December 31st, 2023, in your governmental activities, which include your general fund, your other tax-supported funds, the city reported an unrestricted net position deficit of $31.6 million. Again, that's driven by primarily four liabilities, your I M R F, or Element Municipal Retirement Fund, as well as your police pension fund and firefighter's pension fund, and net pension liabilities that are reported for those amounts, as well as what we call your other post-employment benefit, or O P E D liability there. Your business-type activities include your charges for services fund, your water fund, for example, there is business-type activities, reports a positive unrestricted net position of $469,000. For fiscal year '23, the city's net position did increase by about $3.3 million in total, $3.5 million in the governmental activities, with a slight drawdown of about $178,000 in the business-type activities. When you get to the next level in the reporting, your fund financial statements, your general funding in the city's main operating fund here, you report a positive unassigned fund balance just under $5.6 million as of December 31st. That is approximately 33% of your general fund expenditures there. So it tells you that you have a, you know, solid, I would say, in line with similar-sized communities in terms of what you have for a fund balance reserve in your general fund there as well. General fund pretty flat for fiscal year '23, had a slight drawdown of about $70,000 there. Your overall fund balances did decrease by about $713,000, majority of that driven by spending down in the dollars in your motorfield, that's your M S T funds. In your sewer, your solid waste and your golf course fund, you were able to present positive unrestricted net position for the sewer and solid waste fund there, while you do have a slight deficit in the golf course fund. All in all, for the funds for the year, again, $177,000 of a decrease in the net position for those business-type activities, so again, sewer, solid waste, solid waste and the golf course. Last item that I'll just highlight for you this evening, I always like to focus and just make sure that you have a good handle in terms of what those pension liabilities are, obviously, as that's driving the net position on the financial statements there. So your I M R F fund did have a decrease. This is information that's about a year old in terms of this based on the timing of that actuarial evaluation. But you're about 87% funded in I M R F. I M R F really continues to be the, you know, the gold standard in terms of where funds are, how funds are structured, and in terms of the pension funding levels for that. Your police pension fund and firefighter's pension fund did see slight increases this year, so police pension went from 47% to about 50% funded this year. And then on the firefighter side, you went from about 35% to 38% funded there. So as I've shared in previous discussions with council, just continuing to monitor those amounts there, funding at the level provided by the actuary to the extent that you're able to do that. Just controls helps control those liabilities as part of that as well. Again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in our testing there. You are not required to undergo what we call a single audit this year if you didn't spend greater than $750,000 in federal funds. But with that, I'll open it up to any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
As you're seeing these, I guess my thing is what should we be looking out for this year and beyond? Any opinion on that?
In terms of just?
Just financial position, funding issues?
Sure, so.
Is what, I guess what you're seeing in the, you know, other municipalities and what?
Sure.
If we're heading for red flags?
Yeah, I mean, I think generally nothing that jumps out to us that we see as major issues that are out there outside of things that have been kind of common focuses in the past on that, right? So the pension funding and being able to do that, the way the pensions are structured, and the way the benefits are structured for that. Continuing to see an increase in terms of the required contribution amounts as a percentage of what that payroll is, is going, you're going to continue seeing that trend there. I think monitoring now that obviously the both public and fire are consolidated funds there, whether or not, you know, monitoring those investments in terms of kind of how you're doing on that side of things as well. Generally though, I would say, you know, that the city's team is aware and in tune to what is going on. I would say always within the state, monitoring kind of what the state's actions are from a legislative standpoint there. I know the various organizations out there that speak to that as well, but I would say no major red flags in terms of anything from our standpoint.
Any other, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is the information and the process. We hope keeps this from being a Dixon.
So. Do you want any others?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, so.
Okay, we will go on to new business. Item one is action on Plan Commission's recommendations from their September 10, 2024 meeting. Let me see how it's on here. So A, I will be requesting a motion and second to receive and place on file for A, which is the Gulf Road. This motion will be to deny receipt of the recommendation and to refer to Plan Commission for further proceedings, which was recommending denial for a special use permit on the 520 Gulf Road location. So motion to deny will send back to Plan Commission, and we will need them to further review and put in place findings on that decision. Okay?
Second.
So Matt with the motion, and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.
Item one B is a motion to receive and place on file the Plan Commission recommendation for 2024-12, which is a special use permit under provisions of Chapter 17, 1716090 for construction of a proposed neighborhood's utility solar electrical facility on Illinois Route 18 west of the city. You get a motion and second?
Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, and Matt McMullin with the second. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.
Item two will be an ordinance approving and awarding the issuance of the special use permit to petitioner C S Streeter LLC under the provisions of Chapter 17, 1716090, the Streeter Municipal Code to allow for the construction of a neighborhood's solar electric utility facility located on West Illinois Route 18, city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties. This, I was requesting a motion to table this until Plan Commission meets again.
Second.
Okay, motion to table from Tim Gary and second from Matt McMullin. Any discussion? So you would, you would not put this back on the agenda for the October 1st meeting, actually? It would be the second. After, yes, after October 8th. Would be my request. So let the, let the Plan Commission meet one more time and review that item one A before proceeding. Okay, any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.
Okay, item three, Resolution 2024-47, Resolution conserving tag date solicitations to the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties. You get a motion and second. Okay, Matt McMullin with the motion, and Dave Connor with the second. Discussion for this item, it was just correcting yeah, one of the intersections. Did we make sure it's right before we?
Yes.
Before we pass it? Okay, any further comments or questions? This was to move it to Bloomington Street instead of Main and Bloomington instead of Main and Sterling.
What do you?
It wasn't, the orders we passed last time said
Main and Bloomington and Main and Sterling is to Main and Farm.
Oh, should he be Main and Farm?
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item four, Resolution 2024-48, authorizing the execution of the second addendum to the employment agreement agreement with the city manager. Get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Tim Gary gets a motion, and Dave Connor with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item five, Resolution 2024-48, awarding a construction contract to Robert Shea Lane Improvement, Pontiac, Illinois, for the city of Streeter's emergency manhole installation project, counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. You get a motion and second.
So move.
Aye.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, and Tim Gary with the second.
So thank you, Mayor, Council. So ahead of this one yet, this is a project we put out to bid. Throughout the spring and summer, we've had six or three locations where we've had sewers collapse and manholes break in. Pollock Works doesn't have the time or the capability to couple, they're kind of deep. So we put out this project, had four bidders. Little bit being Robert Shea from Pontiac, so recommending a few little, we can get those holes filled into one spot right across from Majestic in the alley, north of Main. The other is on Cedar Street, and the third location's up on the 500 block of Everett and Sterling, so.
Where is the collapse on Cedar Street?
It's at the far, it's the far west end, but the issue we, as you discovered, when that manhole in the far west end collapsed, it tees into the main on Sherman. At least we can access them both ends. So we're going to install a manhole at Sherman and Cedar, and then also at the end of Cedar where it can come back, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Going into item six, discussion items. Item one was a petition to disconnect Share 1713 Sharon Road from the city of Streeter.
So what's to kick this one?
The city received a petition from the owners of this property. It's been in the city now for about 25 years. And, my, sorry. 1713 Sharon Road, the owner suspended the petition to deannex from the city. And it requires the council to allow for that to take place. It has been in the city for about 25 years. At the, at the annex, that's requested the then property owner. I personally believe it would be a opening up a can of worms if we started allowing the annexation of properties that have been in the city for a substantial period of time, 25 years, for a centuries-long period of time that we've been serving that property. In addition, there were no promises made to the property owner that we have not met. Our promises were just provision of basic municipal services. So it's a discussion item tonight if the council wants to pursue. Well, I suppose we'll, we should place that on the agenda for the next meeting. I just wanted to give you a heads up that if you want to have any discussions about it.
So in order, this is purely up to the discretion of the city council. This prop, in order to go above city council's head, if you were, if you would put it that way, it would take having 20 or more acres. Because this is only one parcel, this matter is left to the sole discretion of the city council. And it would take an ordinance passed by the city council to allow the annexation. So if council wants, we could put an ordinance together and vote whichever way council votes at the next meeting. But that's procedurally where you stand. It is purely up to your discretion.
I'm very mixed on this one, because I think most people that know me know that I am very pro-annexation. I think everybody should be in the city. I did talk to the property owner this afternoon. And he told me, when he bought the property in 2016, so he's only owned it the last eight years, he approached the previous in twenty sixteen, so he's only owned it the last eight years, he approached the previous city manager about deannexation, deannexating then. And that city manager told him, really can't do that, there's not anything in place to let that happen. And he discouraged it because he said the city had plans to annex all of Sharon Road in and there would be curbs and gutters and sewer.
They said in the meeting that's not.
What's that? This is what I was told. Um, and he said, obviously, eight year, eight years later, uh, that hasn't happened. He said he, and because he is so separated from the next piece of property on Sharon Road, he feels like he's just sticking out there and paying extra taxes for no reason. He's not really getting, you know, the township is plowing his road, the police don't drive out there and patrol one parcel that's two blocks further down the road than everybody else, so. Like I said, I'm a little torn on it because I, I believe in annexation. I think if everybody who is contiguous to the city would annex and be part of the city, everybody's taxes would drop dramatically. But I don't believe in forced annexation. I think we just need to educate people on what, what the advantages of being in the city are. So this was not a forced annexation, this was voluntary at the time. The current owner bought the property knowing that was located in the city limits and, uh, the city is repeatedly having to provide municipal services, police and fire to support properties outside of the city limits just because we're requested to come in. Oftentimes, just the time it takes for a county to provide a service that they is such that we, we answer the calls and, uh, yeah, this is kind of a unique situation because it's just a tab off of the larger field, but I, I think the city's long-range plan has been to attempt to annex properties and, and hit these neighborhoods into the city limits. They also have to remember that, uh, the city is provider of parks and recreational services and, uh, uh, there's a significant clause associated with that and the unincorporated properties aren't contributing to that directly through property taxes.
Right.
So that burden falls on, on, uh, on the in-city properties. The same, you said, I think, to the library, although there's an opportunity to buy a city library card, if only the parents putting kids in schools had paid for the schools, schools could be supported. And, uh, in some respects, I think the city here struggles with parks and library services because the resources of the broader area aren't available to support those operations. And so, you know, we don't have the aquatic center and some of the amenities that other communities offer because, you know, maybe two-thirds of the population are supporting everything. So it's your call, not my call. Uh, I, I, I think it would be a dangerous precedent because similar arguments can be made across. Why twenty-five years, thirty, what, what's your thresholds? What lines are you going to draw? Now, I think the circumstance would be different if there were guarantees that we would do this for that in order to, um, facilitate the annexation agreement and then we didn't follow through with our work, but that's not the case here. I, I think he was told that was the plan, he wasn't promised that. I think there was a individual living in the properties that required, uh, the previous tenant, yeah. The previous tenant, and that, and those services were provided by the city for years. And as I told him, you know, feel fortunate that in eight years, you've never had to call the police or the fire department, but if that happened, I'm sure you would be glad you were part of the city and you weren't relying on a, a volunteer fire department as your house is burning, you know? Right. So I did make that pitch to him. And we do collect municipal, you know, the, the waste management provides various budgets to be built for that service. To the extent that if ever a need to run sanitary, we're going to be in a capacity to do that. If the rest of the neighborhood wants to work with us. Again, this is your, your call, not mine, but, uh, I would find it very difficult to know where to draw the line when the next request will come in because we're talking about this publicly to other people and how they Right. Start thinking, hey, you know, maybe I'll make that request and then where are we?
I think this one, like you said, was pretty unique. They are basically on the
Yeah.
residentially speaking, I mean, disconnecting them to affect anyone else and.
Yeah. It's not like the next door to, to the state.
I don't like to see it either, but this time, like, I think.
We also have, we also have pre-annexation agreements for people on islands that are currently receiving, uh, some services from us in anticipation that when we, uh, our contingent can actually follow through with the, uh, annexation, that we'll, we'll be doing that. So it kind of goes both ways.
And why not look at their bill too? I think two thousand dollars of their taxes come to the city. That's a lot, that's more than what some people pay for their entire tax bill period and all they're getting is promise of fire and police if they need it. So I can understand that frustration in eight years of giving the city close to, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars and you're still not living anywhere, only in your neighbors, so. Again, I feel like that's where you can find the unique part of this one versus.
It is a unique situation, that's right, but it sets a bad precedent when you start deannexating. It does and there are regional facilities that the city is providing, so they're benefiting from parks and library services and start, and it's a struggle to just keep things going right now. So it's just, it's your domain, it's your boat, not mine. I gotta give you my thoughts.
Any further comments on this?
No. When we present both sides of the story before
Understood.
we go any further.
Discussion six two, which is compensation of elected officials. This was one that, um, Cheryl had requested we mention and because of timelines with elections is what it comes down to.
The compensation of elected officials has to be set at least a hundred and eighty days before the new officials take office, so we'll have two council seats up in twenty twenty-five. So if we're going to adjust the compensation, I'd like to do it at the first meeting in October to make sure that we fit that hundred and eighty day, hundred and eighty day date requirement. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Make sure we're
One way or the other.
So if council feels strongly, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but
But I would need to know the amounts to put in the ordinance tonight, so.
I, I don't want to speak for the rest of the council. I'm comfortable with what I, that I'm being compensated. Yeah.
And we will go to six. No action. Okay, item six three, it was parking on the north side of Morel Street across from Sugar High School. Any, uh, we do have.
Anybody have an opinion on this?
Oh, yeah. Should we have the sample ordinance?
I know that I did, uh, hear a sample ordinance, I don't know if it was in your meeting package.
Yeah, there should be a draft.
I don't, I don't get the paper package.
Yeah. Sorry. It is, I see it on the table on the inside. It was part of the revised agenda.
Okay. And I will click on that too. So this
Thank you.
It's not coming up on my screen. Okay, so this was designated the north side only from seven to four, resident only parking. And so this is the sample ordinance to do so. We are not voting on it tonight, we're just discussing. I've gone, I've been taking random day drives past, um, accounting open parking spaces and as this has come up and I've gone through more and more and kind of just seen what's available, um, I guess my question is, do we have a lot of residents that are requesting this and would it be better to have a process where the person requests potentially one spot unlimited to one per home and only those that request it, um, versus making everyone? Because some people, I would guess, don't, don't mind it and don't, uh, you know, they kind of know when you, when you purchase your property, that's what's there, I know, and I bought mine, what was across the street, so that's where, um, as time is going on and I've been making trips, that's what I've kind of come to in my mind. Will I let council make any? Any further comments on that?
Yeah, I've lived on Morel Street and I, I know, I mean, the entire time, whenever there's a football game, I suggested how to park and dealt with it and it's, to me, it's just part of the neighborhood. I, the dangerous part is that I see there's other business in town where if they, if other residents see this, I think it could negatively affect, uh, some restaurants, bars, et cetera. So I mean, I, I think this kind of goes back to the domino effect where it could create a lot of headache for other people, just so somebody can have the Or get those front and chicks relocated with parking in that area.
On Everett Street.
Yeah, because they end up buying that lot.
Parking lot.
Well, the school's been there since eighteen eighty-two. I don't think any of these homeowners on Morel Street moved in before then, so they knew there was a school there and they bought their own. So, you know, it's, I, they have, they have the alley, they can park in the garage or in behind their houses. I just think it's a public street and I've gone back and forth, I, uh, it's a public street, I don't know how we can limit who can park on it.
We do that already on Lincoln Avenue, the one hundred, two hundred block of Lincoln Avenue, our twenty-minute parking when school is in session. So the high school has two blocks reserved for, so they can have, people can come and conduct their business. And then on the south side of Morel Street, there's lanes for busing, there's two handicap spots, which I agree with, there's also a parking spot for administration parking only. And then you have the rest of the one hundred block on the south side is where
But we don't have residents live in the one hundred and two hundred block of Lincoln. It's high school property on both sides of the street that, that we're regulating.
Right, but we'll be allowed that to happen there, so that can have people conduct their business, but these people on Morel Street want this, now if they're older, people come to visit, there's no place for them to park. For under house, you know, these people don't want to have to walk that far, but why should somebody coming to that house have to walk away to come visit if they need ambulance? Now, last week, there was a guy cutting a tree down in the three hundred block of Morel. Somehow or other, I already got up there, went away, he was caught in the tree, I think he cut three of his fingers. There was, the two ladder trucks from the fire department came down there, it took them probably fifteen minutes to figure out how to park to get the truck on an angle so they get the ladder up there and get him out of the tree, because that guy was up there clinging for your life because there was a place where he parked in the, in the three hundred block.
This ordinance wouldn't have any
Right, right, I'm just saying. Uh, also garbage day, they have to put their cans out into the street now on the other side of the car so the garbage man can pick them up because he, he doesn't get out and move the cans. You don't have, you know, he leaves, his normal removals of pain on the north side because there's a big park yard, they're pouncing on the daytime, it's piled out and then it opens up into the driveways and they have to shovel more because they can't get up to the curb.
Most of them put their garbage
This one is
Oh, sorry.
How long parking on the north side for staff only would improve the area and the functionality? There's over thirty-five spots in the park about to have right now for staff to park. To me, I agree with it, with the homeowners, they are, that, you know, they need some kind of help. What exactly, I don't know. I know, uh, you know, there's, there's plenty of parking room for staff to park in if they want to walk farther.
Do you have an opinion? Tell me a story on each spot.
So I'm looking, there's, looks like ten homes on the one hundred and two hundred block.
I know some around the two hundred block.
There's only four on the one hundred block.
And all those homes, how many have parking in behind their houses? Everyone has. Everyone has. Everyone. Yeah, everyone, I drove down this street, it's ten parking at every house.
How difficult is it to have waste management pick up garbage cans in the alley?
They won't do it.
Usually it seems like the cans are in parking spots and the cans are in parking spots and the people just don't park there till they have them here, after the cans are in order. They just like parking on the street that day, is what I
Or they move them out of the way so they can park it and move it over to another area.
People do that at my house, so. The nice ones put it back. So that's a hundred signatures, there's four cars, where they will park. I mean, if people start parking a block away, you got narrower streets, worse curving, it's the, it's the brick streets that are uneven. I mean, Morel Street's six lanes wide. It's a very wide street, I think it makes sense that I would rather people park there than congest up the side streets. I mean, if it's a problem on Morel Street, it's going to be a bigger problem if it gets pushed out further and if they have nowhere to park, then that's going to be a bigger problem, or we're not. Teachers are in and parking.
Is there designated staff and administrative parking lot? There used to be before they rebuilt the building, it was the parking lot on Jefferson, but is, is there one now?
Yes, they have a staff parking lot.
See, it's, if there's ten homes and approximately nineteen, I can't see on the GPS, I
Twenty-one parking.
So that would still, even if everyone had one vehicle out front, I still would leave eleven if we said with request, you know? Maybe it's a survey to those residents that they, how many of them really are, you know, come and want that spot? Because I haven't heard, I know you've, you've heard from, from them, but I have not heard anything. Can I ask my question or will we need to decide? Going forward is do we want to vote on this ordinance as is at our next meeting or do we want to make changes and move forward with something else?
I mean, I like change, but I don't think this needs changed and it's fine how it is.
Come down in.
Doesn't make any difference to me, I, I pretty much know where I'm at.
I'm with Dave, I know where I'm at.
So do you want me to put this on the next meeting? Which may, I believe, October second? To vote or?
Put it on, we'll vote, either vote it up or down.
Okay. Ten to. Go to item seven, consent agenda, which is a motion and second to approve the fund warrant total of seven hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty cents. A motion by Tim Gary and second by Matt McMullin. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Aye. Item eight, city official comments?
Dave, it's up.
Yes.
I meant to put this on the agenda for discussion tonight, I didn't do it. And we received a request from, I'm gonna butcher the last name, Melissa Rouse, 317 South Park. The city owns a lot at 214 Nice Beach, which is across the street along the river of the funeral home, the Hady Schultz Field. And to fake the lot, I'm not sure how we acquired it, but it's, we're entitled to it. And it's a fairly narrow lot because of the lot, it's on the south side of the block. And I think, and we do have a proposal to buy it, it's about the prices that we've been seeing for the previous purchases, essentially giving away lots now. In large part to neighborhood property owners or people who may have an interest in building a house. I question whether or not this, this is a commercial area, and I question whether or not it's really built a lot, you know? Yeah, and just maybe an expansion of the parking lot. Her intent is to plant a garden on the property. It borders property just to the north of the city, and once again, it's along the river, and I'm somewhat reluctant to recommend that we could sell a lot along the river because it would, or include the city from whatever intends to build a pad or expand landscaping along the river, which I believe personally is an asset to the city, and that we should try and take better advantage of. And it also opens up the question in some future years, some future property owner that may want to develop on this substandard lot because of approximately the cliff in the elevation travel lot, that, I don't know, at least part of the lot. And so I just wanted to have a, kind of a discussion with you. I guess the mistake we made, Stephanie, was to include this lot on the list that's available for sale. You know, there are other lots that we're not actively selling for the prices that we're, that we've been giving away slots for, like Lit and P Lot, and there's many others out there. And I think this lot kind of falls in that category, since it's along the Gregory adjacent, because of the billboard that are just to the north. In my discussions with her, I suggested that, you know, if she just wants to plant a garden, she can come in, just propose, and we can, I already planted the garden. And we did similar things just north of Morel Park, I mean, Morel Park property, where butterfly garden. And I think we're open to creative use of city property, but once you sell it, it's outside of our control, and if we ever want to bank in the future for some longer public purpose, I suspect it's going to take a lot more money and effort to reacquire it. So I'm here tonight primarily because I, in retrospect, I wouldn't have made this property available, but we did, and we did receive the proposal. We want to consider the proposal at the next meeting, at the place that we need to go.
I believe when we made that list, this one was one that I commented that I thought we were going to remove at that time, so I think that it was released an error to be on there. I'm not sure if this one, and Jeremy probably knows off the, if this is the covenant with the grant, where there's no structures allowed to be built on that.
We're not legally allowed to sell it.
Okay, so then I would say that's a very good, if we are not legally allowed to sell it, then I would suggest we strike that one.
Really, that's a question...
That was part of the grant with the land, the, the house slide there.
Right.
To repair and fix that, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, as a dream, I'd love to see a trail along this bunch of the river, you know, both sides. And it's such an asset to the city, we just really don't take as much advantage of it as we can, you know, over the next, maybe fifty years. It'd be wonderful if we could somehow assemble these parcels and do something that really go away. It was a good start just a few years ago with the Green Lake Trail, but, and at some point, we attempted to get a grant to purchase some property along Oakley, which would be a great area to take out cabins and floaters, and also to be a terminus of a bike path along the river. And, you know, there may be other opportunities to try to push the trail program for over the next few years. So I'll communicate that, I think, back to the...
Melissa.
Any comments or comments?
I'm standing up today.
Oh, and I should also make a comment. Thank you for, for being my agreement. It's a real pleasure to serve this community in the council.
You're welcome. I was just going to mention, there's a joint review board meeting being called on regard to Tiff Districts on October third at 11:00 a.m. in council chambers. This is, again, is certified by the Office of Sound Livingston County Clerk, so just review on that. So that notice is out. I also wanted to mention a gentleman, Dave Lawless, is donating a handicapped accessible swing to City Park. Their, his son did a Eagle Scout project years ago and built the frame and a swing there, and it's, since damaged and was removed, so the swing's been ordered, and I just would like to publicly thank Dave for that donation. Excuse me. Further, we have a request from the Hardscrabble Lions Club to do their candidate October 12th at Main and Outer Creek, so this does match our tight-day solicitation requirements, but I will have them fill out the official form for that. Then I will request a motion and second to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussion of legal matters under five ILCS 120 slash two, item two of the Illinois compiled statutes, collective bargaining. Be met with a motion and Tim with a second. Clark, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Aye.